Okay, are there any?
We can pull that way. We'll do the additions and corrections after.
Okay. Okay. Scott, would you like to come up and take the oath as mayor, please?
All right. And raise your hand, please. Do you, Scott Forcell, solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Idaho, and that you will faithfully discharge your duties of mayor of the City of Hayden according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay. Congratulations, you're a man. Yep, come on up. There you go.
You got the volume on there?
Okay. Here, let's just have it on here.
Hello?
Okay, you ready?
Let's find out. Good evening, ladies.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Those that are online, could you please mute your mics for now? Oh, thank you. We skipped over this one, so when you're ready, we can go back to that.
Two weeks ago, I was a member of this audience. When appropriate, I was talking to Planning and Zoning Commission, and I was also talking with city council advocating for slow growth and as transparent a government as we can possibly have. Now, two weeks later, big change. In the last week, the city staff has been working hard, some might even say feverishly, trying to get me up to speed on some of the issues that affect Hayden. And I would like to recognize them. First, I'd like to, for those of you that may not be regular attendees here, our city administrator, Mr. Brett Boyer. Brett, could you introduce your staff here just very quickly if you wouldn't mind?
Sure, I'll start up here with Abby Sanchez. That's our city clerk. Donna Phillips is our community development director. Ellen Satterfield is the public works director. And Sandy Rudy is our finance director. Suzie Kano is with Recreation, Recreation Director, keep changes on his name. And then on the end, there we have, Zach is one of our planners. Anybody else down there? I think that's everybody. Oh, Sean is our deputy clerk and HR person right there. So appreciate all of them and what they do.
They are all excellent, take my word for it. I'd also like to recognize a very distinguished guest that we have here this evening, Sheriff Bob Norris. Sheriff Norris has been very supportive of Hayden, and I know that you have an incident going on now that takes your time, and I also understand that you have virtually no family time. So I would like to let you know how much we appreciate you showing up here tonight for the swearing in, and on behalf of all of the folks here, thank you, and please thank your deputies for what they do to keep us safe. Thank you very much.
We appreciate it.
My opening remarks are going to be very brief. I am here to try to put things back on track. I want us all to put the past in the past. I want to leave it. I want to turn down the heat, and I want us to start turning up the conversation and the communication. I urge everyone in this room and watching to start moving forward so that we can start solving Hayden's issues and make it an even better place than it already is to live. We have some, I have a call to the council if we have any additions or corrections to the agenda.
It'll wait, it can wait till later.
Okay. All right. Hearing none?
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
There are two, or one correction to the agenda.
Ah, okay. For those of you that have the agenda in your hand there, for item four, unfinished business, we are going to be deleting action item E. It's not quite ready for us to take a look at yet.
Which one?
Four E.
Four E is being removed. Okay, moving on to the consent calendar. For those of you who may not be really familiar with the way the city does business, there are a myriad of things that our city does for everyday business. It's, the list is almost endless. There are some items that the city does that require, even though it is normal courses of business, it still requires the consent of the council before it can officially move forward. So the items that are contained in item two on your agenda are called the consent calendar. I would like to take, I would like to mention to council that I would like to take item two B and discuss that separately. Remaining, I need to read these off to you. For two A, approval of the fourth and Honeysuckle Roundabout Partial Pay Application Number One. Two C, approval of PZE 22-0016, the Daniel Zone Map Amendment Written Decision. Two D, approval of the Hayden Area Regional Sewer Board Wastewater Treatment Plant Facility Upgrades Payment Request. Two E, the ratification of the April payroll. Two F, that's my grandson, by the way. Two F, the ratification of bills for payment of May 27, 2022. And, let's see, two G, the ratification of bills for payment '05, '04, 2022. And two H, the approval of bills for payment. Do we have any discussion from anyone on council about these items?
And we're going to talk about B, you said?
We will talk about B separately. Any questions, concerns, or discussion from anyone on council about any of these items? Hearing, okay, hearing none, I'd like to call for a motion to accept these items on the agenda.
Go ahead, Anne. Go ahead. Please to approve.
Okay, go ahead, and I'll second.
Go to approve the meeting agenda.
Consent calendar.
Consent calendar, I'm sorry.
Second, okay. With the exception of B, correct?
Yes. Do we have any further discussion that we'd like to have on any of these items? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White? Yes. Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Motion passes. Item two B, on this particular item, I spoke regarding this item to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And in the utmost caution, because I do not want to have any perception of pre-decision, I am going to recuse myself from any discussion regarding item two B. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Satterfield if he would take over with that.
Do you have your agenda?
Yeah. So, where do we go?
Is there any discussion on the Zone Code Tax Amendment at all? Sandra, do you have anything?
No, I'm good on that.
Yeah, do you have anything?
Nope.
Okay, there's no further discussion, that was included in the overall motion to accept the consent calendar. So where do we go from here, Abby?
We just need a moment to approve that item. Okay. I have a motion to approve Zone Code Tax Amendment to amend Title XI, Chapter 1, Section 7E, Amendment Procedures Written Decision.
I second that.
Any additional questions?
Roll call. Oh, any additional questions?
Nope.
Comments? Nope. Roll call, please.
All right. Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
All right.
The next item on our agenda is any visitor or public comment for non-agenda items.
And Mayor, I have Elsa Owlsley, she is virtual, she would like to provide comments, so if we can take hers first, and then I have one additional one.
Of course. Ms. Owlsley? Hi, I'm Scott Forcell.
Hi, everyone.
Please, go ahead.
Hi.
I would like to mention to you, you've got five minutes maximum.
Yes, thank you. My name is Elsa Owlsley, I live at 37593 East Hayden Lake Road in Hayden. I had planned to be there tonight, but, and I have really been looking forward to it, but both my husband and I are a little under the weather, so in an effort to not get anyone sick, we decided to stay home and do this virtually. My reason for speaking is I wanted to thank you for all of the council members last week for how well you handled the situation. I know it's been a little contentious, and you guys had a decision to make, and you did fantastic. I also want to thank you for not allowing this to go to the governor. No one knows what the City of Hayden needs best than you council members that are currently serving. And so I wanted to let you know that I really appreciate that. And regarding the three candidates that we had, they all had different things to offer. In my opinion, Scott Forcell was certainly the best option, so I thank you for having the wisdom and insight to decide on that. So, thank you for that. With that said, and being how important this meeting is as we install a new mayor, I wanted to offer a prayer, if I may.
As long as it doesn't exceed your time.
Certainly, go ahead, as long as it doesn't exceed your time. No, that'll be brief. Thank you, Lord, for all of these women that have decided to set so much of their personal time aside, away from family, friends, and many other commitments, I'm sure, that they've set aside this long commitment to serve the City of Hayden. Thank you for their staff and the attorneys involved, as they have grueling, long meetings at times. Thank you for having the wisdom and the decision that they made last week, and that this did not drag on any further, and that they had the foresight to see that this would just be too much stress on the city's residents, and our City of Hayden does not need the negative publicity, and they certainly, now we can rejoice in having a new mayor. We give, I say you give wisdom, discernment, insight, insight and strength and endurance for the months to come, for the next however many 20 months that the new mayor has. I ask that you please calm, calm disability, prevail, that they have so many important decisions to make. Bless today's meeting, give wisdom to our new mayor, Scott Forcell. May he be a blessing to the residents of Hayden, and may he be an example of leadership in our community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms.
Thank you so much for speaking.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
One other person. Okay, and this is John Grimm.
Right.
Mr. Grimm, if you could please state your name and address.
Right here?
Yes, sir.
All right.
And you have up to five minutes, sir.
All right. My name is John Grimm, I have a business here in Hayden at 11784 North Tracy Road. I live up on Rim Rock in the county. For the past 17 years, almost 18 years, I've had a business here in the Warren Cave Park, kind of a little gem of industrial production there in the Warren Cave Park. And Mr. Mayor, if you ever get a chance, you know, swing on by. By the way, congratulations, or condolences, I don't know which is appropriate, but thank you, and thanks to all of you for the service that you give in this capacity. Some of you might recognize me as a person who's quick to point out when something is wrong, especially when it comes to the political mess we've made here in Cooney County for ourselves. But tonight, I want to take a break from that and give credit where credit is due. A friend of mine is commanding his business here from Nebraska, and they're housed temporarily over in Post Falls, and through a series of events there, they've got to vacate that premises and find a building with enough power to house them. And they identified a building here in Hayden, and Thursday, he texted me, so just a couple of days ago, he texted me, says, "I'm at my wit's end, there's an insurmountable obstacle that's been placed in our path by the city, and it looks like this building's going to fall apart." And when he explained it to me, I thought, something is not right. And he's cautioned me before, he says, "I'm new here, I want to tread lightly, I don't want to make an end run around anybody by, you know, make somebody upset," and I've told him before, I said, "That's just not how things are done here." So I called our city administrator Brett Boyer. And the remarkable thing is, is I can call in the middle of the day, get a hold of the switchboard, ask for the city administrator, she puts me right through, and I'm sure he had other things going on, but he picks up the phone, remembers who I was from a conversation almost three years ago. I briefly explained the situation, and he says, "Well, let me look into it. No promises, no nothing, but let me look into it." About 45 minutes later, my friend called me, and he said, "I know I've told you that I don't want to go around anybody, but you know everybody in town, who, what do I do?" I said, "I've already made the call." And he says, "I want to tread lightly," and I said, "Look, Scott, these are good people. If they can help, they will. And if they can't, they'll come up with a reasonable solution, you know, for you to move forward, right?" And I told Donna over the phone, and I'll say that to Brett, "Thank you for not letting me down." That was, you should have seen Scott today when he came back from your meeting. He was, he was just over the moon, it seemed like. I'm sure that there are many good employees here in the City of Hayden, but we really are blessed as a city and fortunate to have employees like Donna and Brett. And when I say city, I don't mean the entity, I mean all of us here that call Hayden, either our home, or where we work, or whatever. What's there about 180,000 people in the county now? Something like that. Anybody have a problem with traffic? Right? It's, oh, hi, Jen. I could go on about what's wrong, but it's the ability to make those calls and talk to people face to face that make Hayden, and people that care enough about their jobs to get things done, that make Hayden still feel like our small-town home. Thank you.
Thank you. If anyone else would like to make a public comment, all you need to do is fill out a form at the back of the, back of the room and bring it up front here. Okay, seeing as how no one is jumping up out of their chairs, we will move on here to our next item number four, which is unfinished business. Our first item number four, it's an action item, it is the Honeysuckle Beach Study Final Report. And I believe we have Ms. Melissa Cleveland with us tonight. Melissa, are you there?
I'm here, can you hear me?
We certainly can.
All right. Now, I also had to attend remotely because I'm sick, so something's going around.
Ms. Cleveland, if I could just briefly interrupt you, Ms. Cleveland is a consultant who worked on the study and is here tonight to give us a bit of an overview on that Honeysuckle Beach study. I just, I'm sorry about that, Melissa, I just wanted to give you a little introduction.
All right, perfect, yeah. So you're ready for me to just launch right into it?
We certainly are.
Okay, let me, I need to share my screen.
Launch right into it. Oh, launch right into it.
Okay, so Brett said I had about 20 minutes, I have 40 slides, so it's going to be pretty tough. It's been a pretty long study, and there's a lot to get through, so we'll go kind of fast, but then we'll have time for questions at the end, and I'm sure some of the city staff that's been involved can jump in and help answer some of those questions as well. So this is the Honeysuckle Beach and Launch Study Presentation, the final report was in your packet. Okay, so the introduction, so the 2040 Parks Master Plan identified the existing challenges at Honeysuckle Beach and the launch. And what people said during the master plan was that there were just a lot of conflicts between users out there, a lot of congestion. So this study was launched after that to kind of dig in and see what was really going on out at Honeysuckle Beach. We also found that it wasn't a new problem, like that congestion and conflict between users had been happening for probably the last 20 or 30 years out at Honeysuckle Beach. So the study was not to expand, but to explore alternatives to improve the user experience, both for beach users and the boaters at Honeysuckle Beach. And that was a really specific purpose of the study. So just to orient people, the red line is the City of Hayden, so that everything kind of shaded pink is in the city, and this area out here that's not shaded, that's in the county. So this is Forest Street up in, up in here, and then Honeysuckle, and then you come down Honeysuckle Avenue, and here's Honeysuckle Beach. The city's sand pit property is right here at the corner, well, it's across the street from the intersection with East Hayden Lake Road. This property here is all in a conservation easement. This property is owned by Dalton Irrigation District, there's a spillway right here for when the lake is in flood conditions. And then this is a dike all along here that's in that conservation easement property. So just to get everyone oriented, let me zoom in a little bit more on Honeysuckle Beach, of course, here's the beach and the docks, that the launch is right, right in here, and the Dalton Irrigation District has a pump house right here, kind of at the beginning of the launch. And Hayden Seaver District has a lift station that's kind of in the parking lot, and then these are two city parking lots here. And then again, this is where the dike is, the public, you can walk on the dike, but it's all in this conservation easement. All right, so the timeline, we kicked this off in March of 2021, and then just kind of ticked through over the, over the last year or so. So we had, in April, some orientation interviews, and then a public survey. And then April and May, staff and the consultant team were working to prepare for our first working group meeting, which happened in May. And then in May and June, the staff and the consultant groups were working on alternative exhibits, so that we would have something to show the working group. And then in June, we had working group number two. And then July through January, there was a lot going on with the consultant team and the city staff kind of refining conceptual exhibits, meeting with the county, Dalton Irrigation District, and just gathering a lot of information. In January and February, we met with city staff to refine concept exhibits for the open house. Then in February, we had the open house. Then in late February, we had the third working group meeting, and then in March and April, we finalized the report. And then I'm here today. So the very first, I'll just kind of walk you through the report. So information gathering is kind of the first part of the report. So we gathered information on boat launches and daily launch pass data, parking space counts, lake levels, there was a lot of concern with the lake level being so low in 2021, so we did as much research as we could on the lake levels. And then public outreach, that initially was the orientation interviews and then the public survey. So the boat launch and pass data here, what this shows is, the orange is out-of-state daily launch passes purchased, and the blue is in-state daily launch pass usage. So in 2000, you can see this, it's 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. So the percentages haven't changed a ton, and in July, it's almost 50/50 in-state versus out-of-state, and then in August, it's not quite that high. So I know that people are really interested in this data. We know that this data is an incomplete data source, because the only source of the data right now is when you buy a pass from the kiosk, and there's other people that have annual passes that don't do that. Then we also polled annual pass launches sold by type and year, and you can see that we did sell more last year in 2021. Not necessarily a lot more out-of-state or anything like that, but just more in general. Parking, right now, there's 19 trailer spaces in the city's lot that's right there by the beach. Some of those were converted to passenger car parking as a trial last summer, and then there's 45 parking spaces in that lot, that one that's closest to the beach. Lake levels, this was taken off of the USGS website, they have a gauge over at Hayden Lake Marina, so it gives us a good idea on how the lake level has varied over the years. So this just shows from 1990 through 2021, the various lake levels, and you can see here in 2021 that it was low, right? It was significantly lower than it had been, but there were some other low points like that in the 90s. So the initial public outreach, which we call the orientation interviews, was done by another consultant, her name is Gemma Putty from Horrocks, she's an expert in public involvement, so she conducted these orientation interviews with the marina owners, some residents, summer camp staff, some sheriff's staff, Hayden Lake Water Show Association, lifeguards, fishermen, and dock builders. And what we heard from those interviews, the challenges are that boats are getting bigger, there's limited space for launching, and not everybody is a real experienced launcher, and it's kind of tight there with the irrigation districts and the pump house. There's lots of parking and traffic flow issues with backups. The pump house down there is an obstacle at the launch, pedestrian access and safety could be improved. The Honeysuckle launch is an access for the whole lake, like there's not really another good access point to get onto the lake. Sportsman's is inconvenient because it's so much further up north, and it's Sportsman's is inconvenient because it's so much further up north and it's marshy. So opportunities that came out of this orientation interview include maybe having more docks and especially having a spot for emergency personnel to have a boat slip, potentially have a harbor master that would kind of organize the flow down at the launch, find a way to separate commercial, public and emergency needs down at the launch, potentially have a shuttle that would bring people in and park off-site, make people pay for parking, include some sort of a drop-off area so that it wasn't so difficult to drop off or pick up people from the beach, maybe have scheduled windows of operation of the launch so it wasn't just an all-day deal, potentially have an attendant that managed the site, particularly the parking, and maybe just overall increase costs to use the facility. So then we also did a public survey and 440 people took the survey and most of those were Hayden residents, about 30% were Cootenay County outside of Hayden, less percent were Idaho residents but outside Cootenay County, and none of them were out-of-state. And we had that at flyers, at city parks, we advertised in Super One grocery bags, and then we had it, of course, on the city's website and Facebook page. So as part of what we got out of this survey, there's a lot, it's all in the appendix of the report if you want to dive in, but if we're just kind of drilling down to what ended up being interesting, overcrowding was ranked as one of the top three challenges by 80% of the people that took the survey. Traffic congestion was one of the top three challenges ranked by 81% of the people that took the survey. And need for more trailer parking was a top three by just over 50%. So you can kind of see maybe how the public views the challenges at the beach and launch. And then we also had a bunch of various solutions that we were kind of throwing out and seeing what people thought of them. And the only one that really like stood out as people thought that that would be a good solution was being able to relocate the boat launch. So it was ranked as good or excellent by 67% of respondents. It was the highest rated solution presented. But I do want to point out that at the time of the survey, there wasn't a location proposed for the launch. It was just this general theme of if we could relocate it, would you like that? So the takeaways from the public outreach, and this is prior to the open house, right? Because we hadn't had the open house yet, this was still an information gathering, was that it's, the challenges are that it's overcrowded and that there's a lack of parking. Other issues were cleanliness, perception of out-of-state users kind of overrunning it, and traffic flow conflicts. There were other comments that it's difficult for the non-motorized lake users, like kayakers and paddleboard users. 64% would be willing to pay more launch, 48% would not be willing to pay for beach parking or day use, so that's about a 50/50, right? Half would, half wouldn't. About 50% would be willing to pay up to $5 for a parking at the beach. And people were in favor of relocating the launch. So we assembled a working group to kind of help the consultant team and the staff through this study because one, we felt like if there was an easy solution, it would have been done by now since these issues have been going on for decades. And then also, the city recognized that we really couldn't solve this problem without partners. And there were a lot of multi-jurisdictional partners that we needed to reach out to that needed to not just be consulted, but needed to be actually part of the team. So that was Cootenay County, specifically their parks and waterways staff and their marine sheriffs, Lake Highway District, Dalton Irrigation District, Department of Land, because the Department of Land permits anything below the ordinary high water mark on Hayden Lake, Department of Parks and Recreation, because they provide most of the funding, the Army Corps of Engineers, Fish and Game, Department of Water Resources, the Hayden Lake Sewer District. Remember the person from Topeka Marina, and he was kind of identified during the orientation interviews, has just been really knowledgeable, so we asked him to join the working group. The Inland Northwest Land Conservancy, they are, who holds that conservation easement? What we talked about when we were looking at the map. And the Hayden Lake Water Shed Association, they were added later, they weren't initially part of the first working group meeting, but they were added later. They were part of the orientation interviews initially. So then I'll move on to the identification of alternatives. So the things that came up during many, many different brainstorming sessions and comments even from the public are overflow parking in the city's sandpit. Sorry, having to drink water because of my voice. And that was viewed as interim, right? Because the city still needs their sandpit. So if we could just have an interim solution to have overflow parking in there. Reconfigure the beach, which would require relocating the launch. Relocate the beach to the, to South Honey Suckle Bay. Relocate the launch to South Honey Suckle Bay. Expand water activities in other city's parks, like Splash Tavern, Nester's. Have a launch reservation system so that it wasn't just a free-for-all, you'd have to sign up for a window to launch, maybe spread that peak out. Have a harbor master that would kind of organize the launch activities. Increase user fees and just remove the launch altogether and use sportsman's access as really the only public access on the lake. So I'll walk through the interim. Boat trailer parking would be in the city's sandpit. The benefits are that it would remove parking from the shoulder of Honey Suckle Avenue. And it might, we're not sure if this would really occur, but it might reduce launching time. That would be dependent on if the shuttle really reduced that overall turnover time or not. The challenges are that it requires a shuttle because it's too far from the launch. And it might not, that shuttle might not operate early enough to accommodate fishermen. And it might not really reduce congestion in the existing parking lot because you still have to go through there to launch. And it eliminates a huge portion of the city's sandpit for public works activities. So another alternative was to reconfigure the beach. This would require relocating the launch because the launch is no longer there in this. The benefits are that it removes safety, well, it removes safety, I meant it removes that safety conflict and trailer parking concerns from the beach. Expand the beach for more elbow room without, it doesn't really expand parking though, so it's not seen as really a expansion, it's just giving more elbow room. It's an expansion of green space, improves ADA and pedestrian access, provide the dedicated emergency services boat slip and parking spaces, which are right here in here, and a drop-off area so that you can swing through and drop people off or pick them up, and provide a non-motorized launch so the existing launch will get converted into a non-motorized kayak and paddleboard launch. And it also has spaces for vendors or concessions. The challenges with this option are that parking's not expanded, which is intentional, and also we're really constrained for space. Therefore, we could still have parking issues if the beach just continues, the beach usage just continues to go up. It may require the relocation of Hayden Lake Sewer District's lift station because it's kind of like right here and so it'd be kind of in the way of everything. So that, but this is just a concept, so we'll have to, we'd have to work that out. And it may also require the relocation of the pump house for Dalton Irrigation District, though again, that might be something that we could work around as well. So another option was relocating the beach to the south end of Honey Suckle Bay. And I put some pictures here because we didn't really have a concept exhibit on that, but this is where that spillway is and this is the dike kind of down there on that south end. It would, the benefits would be that it reduces the conflict between the beach users and the boaters because it separates the uses, because we leave the launch where it is. Wouldn't require sediment removal because that's a challenge of relocating the launch. It could improve parking in grass areas because we could have a whole new parking lot and beach area. The challenges though are that it's pretty difficult to permit new sand. It reduces the public beach waterfront over existing conditions, it's a lot smaller than the parcel over here, it's a lot smaller than what the public has today. It increases, it would increase traffic on East Hayden Lake Road. Also, just because of the littoral rights on this property, it would reduce dock space quite a bit over existing conditions. The spillway, which is, which is used when it's the lakes at a high level, would probably, might limit use in those high water conditions. And there's a little bit of commercial dock activity to the south, which might not be that great right next to the beach. And it also maybe, probably would be in conflict with prior state and federal grants that the city had used to improve the beach and launch and docks. So it might be a real insurmountable challenge. One of the other alternatives is to relocate the launch. And this is, we do have a concept on that. This is on that parcel that I showed you on the map earlier that is on the very south end of Honey Suckle Bay and is owned by Dalton Irrigation District. So it has, you know, its own entry off of East Hayden Lake Road, has all this trailer parking space. This isn't really an expansion because we no longer allow trailer parking along Honey Suckle Avenue and certainly not along East Hayden Lake Road. So this is really just about the same number of spaces that you'd have today if you parked in this existing city parking lot plus along the road out to Honey Suckle Avenue. The benefits of this one are that it separates user groups again. A lot more storage for queuing vehicles waiting to launch without kind of impacting the other, anyone else. The trailer parking close to the launch so that the turnover, you know, isn't so long, allows for the elimination of parking along Honey Suckle Avenue. Could provide a relocation for Dalton Irrigation District's irrigation intake and pump house should they desire that. It wouldn't require a shuttle. Fishermen could use the launch early morning and have nearby parking. And it provides parking for boaters and passenger cars too, so then they're not parking over there at the beach and using that parking. And it provides a separate restroom for boaters. The challenges are that it's, there's low water, which we all recognize. So this is some photos that I took last November. So this is the property here and this is where the water was in November. So it's low water over here, especially last year. High water or freezing conditions may limit the use because when the water's spilling over the spillway, it might be dangerous to use the launch during that time. It also, because it's lower water level than the existing launch, might freeze. And so it might, there might be months in the year when you can't launch because it's frozen. We know that there's gravelly soils out in the bay, so we wouldn't, if we removed sediment, we wouldn't want to get into those soils and do any damage to the environment. There is a no-wake zone in a lot of non-motorized activity in the bay, which having a lot more boats in the bay might be in conflict with. There's potential floodway and/or wetland impacts just kind of in this zone here that if we were to fill that in and put a parking lot there, it might impact both items along with biological impacts. And it could increase traffic on East Hayden Lake Road. There's an impact to property owners that live out here that today don't have that impact. And then it would require either property purchase, lease or long-term lease agreement with Dalton Irrigation District. You can expand water activities in other parks. The benefits of that are to give Hayden residents alternative water activity options in Broadmore, Finkin, or other parks. Challenges are that it might, may not really alleviate the challenges at Honey Suckle Beach, it would be nice, but it might not really solve any of the problems. Finkin, it's the closest to Honey Suckle Beach, but it's already heavily used for softball in the summer, which that's what this photo is, is all the parking for softball. A launch reservation system, the benefits are that it would spread out the peak for launching, it might alleviate congestion, queuing, and roadway traffic demand, and also would give us an opportunity to have better data collection of who's launching. And the challenges are that managing fairness, like if somebody just goes in and takes all the spots or something. Some users might not use computers or the internet, a lot of fishermen are early morning, they're elderly, and maybe this would be a challenge for them. And also, just those early morning fishermen have been resistant to wanting to have to schedule anything. A harbor master, the benefits of that would be to decrease chaos and increase organization, which would also decrease frustration. And the challenges are paying for that position, right? Or maybe more than one position and finding qualified personnel to actually do that job. Another opportunity is to increase user fees. The benefits are that it would increase funding to do things, to make improvements, potential decrease in demand because maybe people wouldn't come here if it wasn't so inexpensive. The challenge are, challenges are that it limits for low-income residents from using the amenity then, and it could jeopardize past and future parks funding if we only raise for certain user groups. There's certain rules that the out-of-state fee can't be more than double the in-state fee. So you kind of have to raise them both if you want to raise it for out-of-state. And then removing the launch and just remove the launch altogether and just sportsman's access exists and you can go up there and use it. Here's where sportsman's access is located, way up at the north end of Hayden Lake, here's where Honey Suckle Beach is, way down here. So the benefits are that it removes the boat launch traffic altogether from Honey Suckle Beach. And it eliminates that conflict between the boaters and the beach users. The challenges are that, see, really sportsman's access can't be expanded either feasibly. It eliminates the city public amenities that exist today, really increases the driving distance to launch a boat. And it increases activity at the north end of the lake, and that's where there's a lot of mill oil. So it would be dragging, potentially dragging a lot of that mill oil down into the other areas of the lake with increased activity up there. And again, we're probably going to have past issues, or issues with grants that have been issued in the past. that have been issued in the past for the launch if we just eliminate it altogether. Okay, so then we had an open house and the feedback that we got on the beach concept, um, I don't know if you want me to go through all of these, but I'll just do it quickly. Um, it was favorable, right, to separate the beach and the launch because it separates those user groups. Um, a lot of people on the concept just would rather have more grass than less beach. So that's just something to explore later. Um, people liked that there was an increased, um, law enforcement presence shown on the, at the beach. Um, some people were frustrated that it looked like we were improving the beach when they're not the ones that currently pay to use the facility. Maybe that was just before they moved on and thought of their alternative facility proposed for the, for the boaters. Um, people would, wanted us to just move the beach to the dike, but that's not allowed under the conservation easement. Um, and then just concern on potential impacts of fish or game. Um, and then asking that maybe a parking attendant would be a good idea to help manage parking. On the interim parking in the city's pit, um, just a lot of concern about the distance from the beach and the launch. Um, concern about, um, increased congestion on Honeysuckle Avenue with now having a shuttle in addition to everything else. Uh, worried about how the cost of the shuttle would be, would be covered. Um, hoping that it would just be covered by the launch fees, but, but there was concern that that wouldn't be enough. Uh, concern over the hours of operation because again, the fishermen are there real early in the morning and would they, would that actually work for them or not? And, um, there were some people who wanted that interim parking solution with the shuttle to just become a permanent solution. And then the boat launch concept, um, the public liked that it moved boats away from the beach. Um, there were some comments that it might deter people from accidentally driving into the lake. Um, like happens a little bit today, being at the end of a, wouldn't be at the end of a road anymore. Um, concern about the no wake zone impact. Um, concerns about, um, potential traffic congestion on Hayden Lake Road. Also concerned about just increase the number of boats in general on the lake, which that's kind of why we're not really expanding anything. We're just trying to stay with consistent numbers that are today because, um, the, the team didn't want to increase boats on the lake either. So I, we understand the concern for sure. Impact to waterfront residents that don't have, you know, that are on the south side. Potential environmental issues, um, just concern over the magnitude of cost potentially. Um, that the launch might freeze in the winter was a concern because it, um, rarely happens at the existing launch. And then, um, just mostly just concern over the shallow water and the gravelly soils, um, in that location. Other general comments were...
Melissa, if I could just quickly interrupt you. If you could just give us what you feel are the high points on each of the feedbacks, we'd appreciate that.
Okay, that's the last one.
Okay.
These are the, these are the high points. I mean, we waited through hundreds and hundreds of comments, so, sorry. Um, okay. So the other just general comments were to prioritize the environment. Don't do harm to the lake and its ecosystem. The lake belongs to the people, not just the residents on the lake. Um, people are taking a long time to park and waiting to park or to launch. Um, and then also just, um, the, the desire to keep cyclists safe on East Hayden Lake Road. That didn't really fit anywhere else and so it's a general comment. So funding opportunities, um, you can read about those in the report. Um, there's several, um, grants and plus you collect impact fees and you have launch fees and that type of thing. Um, next steps would be, the short-term recommendations were to just, um, if there was any desire to further explore that relocated launch, because there are a lot of challenges with it, but it's really the only option that really seemed to solve all the challenges at the existing site. Would be to just do, um, a little more study on that with more survey and, um, soils analysis, flood modeling, preliminary design, et cetera. So that's recommended under the short-term recommendations. Um, also like looking more into this launch, um, managing neighborhood launch. So looking more into potentially a reservation system, that seemed like a really good idea. And interim use of the sand pit with a shuttle, um, maybe a pilot project or something like that. And then, um, eliminating parking along Honeysuckle Avenue so that it could be safer for bicyclists to get down to the beach. Then evaluate fines so that enforcement of illegal parking is effective. Um, and then the other next steps are to continue cooperation with Dalton Irrigation District and the county and work to expand water activities in other parks. Um, and then the conclusion, um, was basically there's a desire to improve the experience at Honeysuckle Beach without increasing capacity of the beach or launch. Um, support for separating the beach users from the boat launch. Recognize that the needs of recreational boaters and fishermen vary. And though there is support for separating the beach and the launch, there are concerns with the location of the proposed launch. And prioritize the environment, do not harm the lake with any alternative implemented. And just thoroughly understand the wide variety of potential impacts before moving forward. So that was a lot in a short amount of time, I could, I could do it.
Awesome. That, that is a, that took a tremendous amount of work to put together. Members of council, comment on, on the proposal?
Question?
Melissa?
Yeah.
Yeah, can you go back to that next step, the said de priest, the next step?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Please.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I know at the, the meeting they had here about a month ago or so, uh, there was talk about basically what you have, the, the comprehensive bathymetric survey of the bay, top, uh, topographic survey, soil analysis, flood modeling and all those. Those costs alone, um, do you have any idea, is there any looking into approximately what those just initial studies might run?
Um, yeah, they could, they could be pretty expensive. Um, I, I have reached out to people and they could be anywhere from fifty to, um, a couple hundred thousands to, to really look at, look at all these things in detail. Um, I think that if there was a desire, like this is, this is something that would like to be explored in more detail, then, um, we could go through those scopes that, that, um, the people who do that type of study have given me and with, with the public works director and then say, see if, um, there was any interest in, in moving forward. And I think that it just depends on what, how extensive we want to, want to really study it.
Well, do you feel that if we, if we were to say, yeah, we'd like to look at this direction, but it's, those, those are necessary surveys and studies to do if we even just...
Yeah.
Yeah.
They, they would be. I mean, we would have, we would have to study it further. Um, one thing that I read in the paper and I don't, I don't know is that Hayden Lake Watershed Association is, is working on getting a bathymetric survey done. So that might be some piece of data that we could use. I don't know what the quality of it'll be or anything like that, but it might be something that we could, that we could end up using. Um, and you could always like phase it, right? Like what's the most important next step would be to like look at the soils in the bay. Well, like let's look at that scope and just ha, just do the minimum and see if it's still worth moving forward or not. You know, just really, um, phase it like step by step by step so at any point it can be a, you know, this isn't going to work and move on.
And correct me if I'm wrong or misunderstood. Didn't they plug, if that's the right term, parts of the lake already? Because there's, there was a natural drain and there's concern about the soil around that area possibly, you know, disturbing it might cause another drain?
Um, I've, I've heard that. I haven't ever had it be verified, but I've, I've heard that as well. Um, when I talked to, um, a geotechnical engineer who works, um, on lakes a lot, I mean, they said that that's, that's pretty common. That's happened in Coeur d'Alene. It's happened in Spirit Lake and, um, it doesn't mean you can't remove soil. It just means you have to do it in the right way and you have to mitigate it in the right way. Um, so, you know, it just, it just means getting people involved that know what they're doing.
Right. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Other, other comments from council members?
Yes, I had a few questions. I was wondering about the, um, the launch area. I was wondering, for that parking lot, is that a treeed area that would become the parking lot?
Um, let, let me pull it up so I can make sure I know what you're talking about.
Okay.
Um, okay, so are you talking about this whole area?
Yes. Is that treeed right now?
Yeah, that would be the parking lot for the tra, the boat trailer parking here in the middle.
So what's there right now?
What's there right now?
Yes.
It's just vacant land.
Does it have trees on it?
That's a ditch with trees in it.
That's a ditch for water.
Okay.
It's, it's got trees and shrubs, you know, scrub brush and, um, it's, it's pretty, it's pretty densely vegetated, yeah.
Okay. And another thing about that, um, launch area, being that it's part of the Dalton Gardens, um, Water District, what would the jurisdiction of that launch be? Would that be given over to Dalton Gardens rather than being City of Hayden?
Um, there's been, um, all, all sorts of discussions. I don't know that anyone knows exactly how it would, would work yet. Um, we've talked about it being, we, we talked about it being a multi-jurisdictional facility, like maybe a partnership between, um, the county and the city. Um, it's not, it's not City of Dalton. I mean, Dalton Irrigation District is a separate incident from the City of Dalton. So it wouldn't be City of Dalton, but it is in the county. It's not in the City of Hayden. It's just right adjacent to the City of Hayden. So, um, there's been talk of it being a, a multi-jurisdictional facility, um, just to have a partnership on funding and maintenance and all of that. Um, but yeah, I mean, it, it, but all of that has not been hammered out.
Okay. Um, I was wondering, you touched on, um, grant issues. What, what, what did you mean by that? You said there were some...
Um, issues with past grants.
Yeah. About relocating the ramp, there were some grant issues. Well, could you elaborate on that a little bit, please?
Um, I've liked, what I think he made is when we were talking about, um, potentially relocating the beach. So if the beach were relocated here instead of the launch, then, um, this would be a lot smaller than exists at the existing beach. And because the city has accepted grants in the past, there might be an issue with that. The, the people that, that give the grants, um, the feds and the state, and Alan and Suzy can jump in if I am butchering this, but they will let you move a facility as long as it's equal, but they won't let you just either get rid of a facility or relocate it and have it be lesser than what, what they funded before. So there might be some issues to work through if that, if we relocated the beach.
I'm just curious, who issued those grants?
Um, some of them come through the federal government. And so that would be Land and Water Conservation Fund. And then Idaho Department of Parks and Recreation, they manage several other grant programs.
Okay. All right. I had one more question too. I don't remember seeing it, but going back to Honeysuckle Beach, is, um, improving the, the restroom facility part of this plan?
It certainly could be. I don't think there's any detail, this, this study's not detailed enough. Um, but this, this restroom could be the existing restroom or it could be an improved or you could even relocate it if you wanted to and have a new facility.
Does that have, um, drinking water? Um, how's the drinking water provided at Honeysuckle Beach?
At the existing Honeysuckle Beach?
At the existing Honeysuckle.
There, there's a water line.
There's a water line. Isn't that trucked in, Roger?
No, I think it's Dalton. It, water association.
I think it's Dalton Irrigation District.
Oh, yeah. Can you explain?
Is Alan there?
Yeah, Alan does.
Yeah. We, we buy, um, we buy water from Dalton Water Association. It's a private corporation.
Okay. So, all right, um, let's see. I think I have one more question here, let me think. Oh, yeah, I was just wondering, uh, how long, uh, I, I can see a lot of work went in on this and, um, it looks like you guys had a lot of fun coming up with all these ideas too. I would enjoy being on a, a crew like this, working with you on a, on ideas like this. Um, I was just wondering, like, how long have you been working on it? And, um, what has the cost been to the city for this study?
Um, well, it started in March of 2021. And I wasn't, I wasn't, wasn't a consultant then. I was at the city. So they hired, I don't remember these, these things anymore, Brett, I don't know if you do. So they hired initially John Mueller, um, as the landscape architect and he's the one who, um, developed these concepts that I'm showing you. And then HROX that did the public involvement part. And I don't, yeah, I don't remember what their contracts were. And then after, um, I went back to being a consultant, the city, um, asked me to just manage the, the process, um, to finish it up. Um, and I can't, I also can't remember what that fee was, but it wasn't much.
Perhaps, perhaps we can ask, uh, Brett Boyer?
I don't have the exact amount, but it was, I think, a little over thirty thousand, uh, for the last two years for all of the consultants. So we had John Mueller, who's the parks expert that did these drawings and, and participated. And then, um, we had the, the public information group and then also, uh, Wels Comer. So over the last two years, um, that's, that's the amount that we had roughly.
Yeah, I'd have to, I'd have to get that to the council. I don't, I don't have that top on my hands. Councilmember White, more questions?
Uh, yeah, I just, um, yeah, we were just given this packet the other day. So it's going to take me a while to peruse it and, and look at the ideas. It's like, it's as thick as another comprehensive plan, so it's going to take me time to look at it. But thank you so much for all your hard work.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Um, Melissa, this is Roger. Having sat on this committee and stuff and heard the questions and stuff, I, I applaud you and all, everybody else that was on that because this is a very, very complicated problem to solve, if it's even solvable. But a question coming up, and I think you can answer it better than I can, is why bother doing anything? Because if you improve the size of the parking lot, you improve the size of the beach, the size of the boat launch, within a year or two, it's just going to fill up again. And then we're right back to where we're sitting now.
Yeah, well, intentionally we didn't expand anything really. Um, so the parking, the amount of parking is just really similar to existing conditions. I mean, we kind of, from the beginning, thought, you're, you're exactly what you just said, Roger. Like you go and you put a... Like, you go and you put 150 trailer parking spaces and now those are all filled. And everyone, you know, we just ruined the lake because there's so many boats on it. So really, we kind of focused on what is the public telling us? They're telling us that there's just so much conflict between user groups that are trying to use the same space in different ways. And it would be so nice if we could give them separate facilities. So that's kind of where we focused, um, after we understood what the real problem was.
Thanks, Melissa. I knew you could explain it better than I could, so.
That's all I had. Okay. Councilmember DePreez?
No, I'm good.
Okay. For everyone out here, there has been no, zero, nada decision made on anything contained in this report. We've only seen it for four days. I am sure that the rest of the council would agree with, with me that there's a lot of information to go over here. We may very well follow up with further public contacts, perhaps workshops, things like this. But at this point, we'd just like to, to absorb this. Can, um, city staff, can you tell me, is this on our website now?
No.
It's not yet. Do you anticipate it being there soon?
Once it is accepted by the council, it'll be a final report.
Well, there's a great segue. And at this point, with no further discussion, I would appreciate a motion to accept the plan as it's currently written.
May I ask a question?
Yes, of course.
In accepting the plan or in this, um, accepting it, what are we accepting? We're just saying?
Just the report.
Just accepting the report. There's no decisions made.
Okay, no decisions made, just we received it. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Certainly, that is a very good question. And do I hear a motion to accept the plan?
It's a report, not a plan.
Pardon me. Thank you very.
Words matter.
I messed you up.
I would motion to accept the Honeysuckle Beach Study Final Report.
Thank you. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Do we have any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much for all of your effort on that. We certainly do appreciate it. That was, that was a huge undertaking.
Yeah, yeah, good luck. Thank you.
Mayor?
Hey, um, Abby, just real quick, since I'm the presenter, if I leave, it's not going to kill your meeting, is it? Okay, okay, thank you.
Yes.
I was just going to mention that in Roger's question, uh, you know, there's lots of different options, not only to, you know, separate the uses, but there were also things that we heard that if you chose not to separate the uses to make what we're doing down there more efficient. And I think you heard that. And so it will take some time and meetings. And, and we don't have a set schedule for you. And so as you take the time to read through the report in a subsequent meeting, we'll bring it up and say, are you ready for a workshop? Do you want to bring it to another, another meeting when you're ready? So.
Thank you. All right, moving on to the next item of unfinished business. Excuse me, item 4B, the Daniels Zone Map Amendment Ordinance. Donna, can you give us a bit of background information on where this comes from and what we have going on here?
So at the last city council meeting, um, the council heard, um, heard a staff recap of the, um, public hearing and public comments and the staff review for a request for a piece of property on Orchard Avenue to be, have a zone map amendment from agricultural to residential, single family. And the council approved that request. And in the consent calendar, um, tonight, the written decision of that request was also approved. And so the ordinance is the document that enacts the, after it's published, then that piece of property will have a zone map designation of residential, single family.
Thank you. Do we have any discussion on council regarding the?
Mayor? I'm sorry. You didn't, I don't, he didn't make any comments on the Daniels Zone Map Amendment. So he's right on that one.
Coming up, just, just checking.
Does, does anyone on council have any, have any comments or questions about this?
Yes, I just wanted to comment that I did vote against this one, mainly because I felt like the, um, it was putting a new zone in the middle of an agricultural area. And, um, I felt that it was premature in, um, making those kinds of changes and, um, breaking up that neighborhood like it is. And I was listening to neighbors' comments on, and that. So I voted against it. And so I would, I would be voting against it again for those reasons.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. Have any further discussion? All right. I would appreciate a motion from council then to read the ordinance by title only, to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates and to approve the first reading. Do I hear that motion?
So moved. Second.
Second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
No.
This is a motion to suspend the rule of reading on three separate dates?
Oh, excuse me.
Not to approve the ordinance?
Okay.
Just for clarification.
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
And Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes.
So you go ahead and look to 4B in here.
Thank you.
And let's go to the page right here and just read this in caps, all the way down to effective date.
Okay.
Starting in, in ordinance.
Got it. All right. I would like to read the ordinance by title only. An ordinance by the city, an ordinance of the City of Hayden, a municipal corporation of the state of Idaho, providing for change in zoning classification for the lands described in Section 1 of this ordinance from agricultural to single-family residential. Providing for amendment of the official zoning map to reflect these changes. Providing that all prior zones applicable to the lands described in Section 1 are hereby superseded. Providing severability and providing an effective date. At this point, I would appreciate council providing a motion that the ordinance be adopted on its having passed its first reading by title only and that it be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of the summary upon passage.
So motion. Second.
Second. Do we have any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember White?
No.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Abby, help me out. Where do I go from here?
So we have a majority in favor?
Okay, motion passes.
Yep.
All right. Item number 4C. Members of council, I previously spoke on this particular ordinance, regarding this particular ordinance to the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm going to recuse myself from any discussion involving this and I'd like to turn this over to Councilmember Satterfield.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Donna, can you give us a rundown, please?
So at the, um, this is the ordinance putting into place the Zone Text Amendment that basically reinstates the public hearing before city council for zone map amendments. So the code, um, as proposed, would be a public hearing with planning and zoning and then a public hearing with city council. That was approved by the city council at their last meeting. The written decision was approved, um, tonight, um, under the consent calendar. And this, when it's published, um, the ordinance will go into effect and those text amendments will occur.
Thanks, Donna. Okay, so, uh, we start with A, right?
Uh-huh.
Okay. A motion to read the ordinance by title only, to suspend the rule of reading in full on three separate dates and to approve the first reading, followed by a roll call vote.
So motion.
Seconded.
A motion and a second? Roll call, please.
Any discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Discussion on the ordinance or on the reading only?
On that motion.
On that motion. Um, I would just like to say that this is something I really felt would, um, help the process out and, um, give people a second opportunity to speak before the council. And I, um, I'm glad it's going through.
Do you have anything?
We're good. No, we're good.
Now you can do a roll call.
Okay, roll call.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
Okay, now I go to B, right?
Yep, and then we're going to read that.
Okay. Uh, ordinance, whoops.
Sorry, just go ahead and read this.
Just go ahead and read that, okay. Okay. An ordinance of the City of Hayden, a political subdivision of the state of Idaho, amending Hayden City Code Title 11, Chapter 1, zoning regulations, providing severability, always struggle with that, provide for the publication of this ordinance by summary and providing an effective date.
Perfect, did anyone go over this? Call for a motion.
Okay, we have a motion that the ordinance be adopted on its having passed in its first reading by title only and that it can, that it be published by summary incorporating the title as the core of summary upon passage.
So motion.
Seconded.
A motion and a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? Roll call, please, Abby? Abby?
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
And Councilmember DePreez?
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Heard a call for a short break. We'll take a five-minute break, folks, and we'll be right back.
So either way, from our perspective, we want it to be a pass-through cost. And so we wouldn't move forward with this agreement unless the developers agree to pay the amount on this. And so.
We're muted. So I think the opportunity is that we don't want to just slow down, but we think there may be some negotiations that still need to take place and still meet the goal of both the city and this developer. But we're not there yet, but we want to be able to move forward and maybe get to that point here this week if we can, and then move forward with this if we can do that.
But the key with this is that we would not be committing any city funds to pay for this. This would be the developer, and if the developer doesn't agree to this, then we wouldn't do it.
So we'd want it conditioned upon the council. Well, we feel that would be appropriate for the council to condition it upon reaching a pass-through cost agreement with the developer.
Would the $30,000 in this be characterized as a maximum that is still being negotiated?
That, yeah, it is. It is definitely a maximum. The consultant, you know, there's been a lot of challenges. There's been a lot of demands. There's been a lot of back and forth, and it seems like everything takes way, much more effort than it would like. So he's a little bit probably on the conservative side in one sense, but I think there's also maybe things we can go in here and say, maybe these aren't necessary, or these, and we might be able to trim that back as well. So, but we haven't had that time to accomplish that at this point.
And the city's bottom line at this point, your proposal, is that whatever this figure ends up being, the city is not going to be paying it, the developer will be paying it.
We would have an agreement with the developer to cover those costs.
Correct.
Other questions and discussion?
Yeah, that was my main concern. And understanding is that, maybe I didn't understand it correctly, but I thought that the city might be on the hook for an additional 30,000, but with this, as I think we just discussed, it's a pass-through, and we aren't going to be liable for any additional cost.
And we would require a deposit of, whether we go to 5,000 or 10,000, require them to give us money upfront, and then when they reach that point, then we would ask for more.
Am I understanding this also, that the agreement, there are now going to be fewer, it'll be less dense than originally agreed on?
It's less dense than what the comprehensive plan would allow on that property if they came, if it wasn't already conditioned with agreements. So what, I think that the challenge is, is that our comp plan kind of matches the land use that's out there, but their annexation agreement and their PUD overlay, is that the right word?
Mm-hmm.
Kind of limits some of these things, so they can't develop to the maximum that would be allowed under the current.
Under the 2020 master plan?
Yeah.
That's what that says there. Okay.
And this is, so this is a time and materials, so that's why if we have a set amount, they would expand up to that amount based on their time and service, so it's not a, you would pay us 30,000 for these services. It's a time and materials.
Okay, other comments, questions from other members of council?
Is there any timeline associated with this?
Well, there are timelines that will affect the city down the road. We have, for example, we have the Ramsey Road Extension Project, which is a road project. We have to get sewer under that road before they build it. So that is a hard deadline that we have to meet, whether, if we don't get to this point, then the city will just have to fund all that on their own. And so there's some things, but there's also timelines on the fact that, you know, we have limited, right at the moment, we have limited excess capacity in portions of our system that would be alleviated with this project. And so there could be a timeline depending on rate of growth and some other things that would, but there's no, but there is no, like, this date, this date, this date, this date, right?
No, but that's exactly what I wanted to hear from you, Alan. Thank you.
Councilmember White?
So what exactly are we voting on tonight?
We haven't, well, what we will be asked to do is, help me out here.
Approve.
This authorization for additional services.
For additional services.
And you can condition.
I'm sorry, start over. I couldn't hear.
We're being asked to approve the authorization for additional services.
And conditioned upon?
The developers paying their pass-through cost for this.
Okay.
Thank you.
And so what would the cost to the city be? Just to state it clearly.
Zero.
Okay. All right.
I mean, we have some staff time and those kind of things, but not under this contract of J U B.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone on council have any further questions or comments?
Good, no, good. I'm good.
You're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
Good.
I'm good, thank you.
All right. In that case, I would appreciate a motion from council to accept the authorization for additional services. And Brett, if you can help me out, do I need to, conditioned upon?
Reaching a pass-through cost.
Reaching a pass-through cost agreement with the developers.
Let me try this. I will motion for the approval of J U B Engineers, Inc., Authorization for Additional Services for H6 Sewer Basin, conditioned upon developer pays pass-through cost. Good?
I'm impressed. Very good.
Second.
Second. All right. Do we have any further discussion?
No.
Roll call, please, Abby.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. That concludes our unfinished business for the evening. We have some reports from Brett, from the city administrator?
I'll just, there's a couple of calendar items, and then I've asked Alan to also, our Public Works Director, to give a report on the Honeysuckle on Fourth Street construction project that's underway right now. So two items, and these are invites to you as council and mayor to be there. This is next week. There's a junior disc golf, frisbee golf ribbon cutting at Broadmoor on May 18th at 4:00 p.m. So at Broadmoor Park, 4:00 p.m. next week, May 18th. It's a ribbon cutting, if you can make it.
Seventeenth.
Oh, 17th?
I was like, how do you?
I looked at your.
Seventeenth.
Okay.
Arbor Day is the 18th.
Yeah. That's the next one. So Arbor Day, okay, I got those backwards. Arbor Day is something, we didn't do the same the last couple of years because of COVID, and we're back doing a full Arbor Day out in McIntyre Park here, where kids come from elementary schools and participate in learning about things about trees.
400-plus or minus kids, right?
A lot of kids come.
600.
600 kids in the park.
And we've asked the mayor, it'll probably be one of your first kind of official items out there to come and talk with folks about Arbor Day.
Perhaps one of the least hostile.
Yeah, this should be non-controversial.
Just golf, first one should be too, just some fun, cut ribbon.
Just cut the ribbon. And it's the 20-year that we've been Tree City USA. So that's an extra special one to celebrate this year. So that's, the Arbor Day festivities on that day, on the 18th, are from 9:00 to 3:00, but the, your little ceremony thing to do will be at 11:30. So we'll ask you to be there at 11:00. So, anyway, with that.
Great festival.
Still this Saturday. Is the weather going to be okay?
The weather's worse. It's now like an 85% chance of rain, so.
Are we going to move it again?
We might have to. Can't really fight, fight, fly kites and like rain and no wind.
Put a key on it. So we've moved it once, and we thought this Saturday would work. If it's really bad, we may have to push it again. That's fun as well, but more to come on that, but that'd be this Saturday at Broadmoor. Alan, a report on Honeysuckle on Fourth Street?
Yeah. Mayor and council, I'd update you on the intersection improvement project at Honeysuckle on Fourth Street. It's progressing really well. I think we were about a day behind last week. Contractor added some more time to his schedule to try and bring him back, get himself back in schedule. That's not uncommon for that to fluctuate as things go. We did have, last Wednesday, Thursday, we encountered a challenge. We don't always know exactly where all the underground utilities are. They try to get located, and they sometimes are not where they're purported to be. And so we ended up with a sewer force main that was about six feet south where we anticipated, and we also ended up with a water line that was slightly north of where we anticipated, which kind of squeezed our little box of where we'd had to work. That took some time and effort to get that squared away, but that got resolved, and today the gravity sewer is in place, and I don't know if they're done now, but we have been bypass pumping for two weeks, and I think that's done, which is really kind of a scary process, because if anything goes wrong, it's, and we did have one minor incidence with that. We had backed up into a neighbor's basement, very minor. We took it, addressed it. We actually got a really nice letter today from that gentleman complimenting your staff that works for me on their kindness, their concern, and their attention to making sure that we resolve any issues down the road, so.
Excellent. Always good to hear.
And so we are marching forward.
Can you please refresh our memory on when you anticipate relative completion of that?
The substantial completion, which is defined basically as being able to use the facility for its intent, that doesn't mean everything's done, doesn't mean the landscape's done, doesn't necessarily mean maybe all the light poles are in or anything like that, but it means probably you can drive a car on asphalt, right? Is, hope is supposed to be like just before the 4th of July, so the first, last of June.
Asked that only because we're being asked that.
Yes. And so that's part of the reason we're trying to stay on schedule. Of course, I can say that incidents like the other day where we find utilities are not where we anticipate them can create a legitimate claim for a delay on the contractor. We have to treat him fairly under the contract, just as he needs to treat us fairly under the contract. So we have not had that claim, but it could, so.
Brett, would you like to introduce a guest this evening?
Yeah, we have Peter Urbilin here, representing Lake City Law as well, and Katie Burton's on, and congratulations on your twins, and I'm glad to have you as well. So she's back part-time, and Peter's here in case there's any questions concerning the memo that went out, or if you have anything in regards to that, he's here to answer any of those questions, so.
Stay tuned, Peter.
All right. Here you go.
Do you have any further information you'd like to give us?
Nope.
Okay, great. For the last item on our agenda, we have the council roundtable discussion. Does anyone on council have any comments they would like to make?
Anybody?
I just would like to thank staff for their patience and understanding. It's been a tough go for everybody concerned. I thank you, Mayor, for addressing that at the beginning of the meeting, and you did a heck of a job tonight, and I think you're a natural. And I won't call you a politician. That's all I have. Thanks.
All right, thank you.
Anybody else, because this is going to be somewhat lengthy?
Counselor?
Oh, go ahead.
Counselor, okay. Again, as our new mayor stated at the beginning, we're all hoping that we can put the past two months behind us. We accomplished the task of bringing a new mayor in in the minimum amount of time. Everything that went on, we followed process and procedure and what have you, and we actually selected a new mayor without losing any time based on what happened. For those of you who were either Monday night and heard what I said and others said at the end of the session about hoping that we could put the animosity and all of those issues behind us, I met it. And I'm going to read a statement here. First of all, I want to also thank the staff before I get into this, because I've spent time speaking with a lot of the staff. They've been more, very helpful with every time, anything that we, I come in and ask about, and I'm sure it's the same with everybody else. And what's gone on the past two months, and unfortunately appears to maybe still be continuing, has taken an unbelievable amount of staff's time dealing with it. Hours and hours, which equate to taxpayer dollars in reality, paying for those hours and hours of time, having to respond to numerous requests for communications and emails and all kinds of things, as well as the time that the requests have taken of Lake City Law, which are billable taxpayer hours and the like that are piling up. So I'm going to read a statement here. Please bear with me, because it's easiest for me to make sure that I get all my thoughts in, to do it this way. Last Monday evening, at the end of the meeting, I made a statement that I hope that we, the council, could now get on with doing the business of the city that the people elected us to do. I ask that we put the personal problems behind us and move on in the best interest of the city. We had completed the selection process of a new mayor. We did it in the minimum time by following the process. After my statement last meeting, councilmember Roder stated that he was sorry for offending anyone and that he was under a lot of pressure. Councilmember White then apologized to councilmember Satterfield for statements that she had made early in the evening. Councilmember Satterfield accepted the apology. The audience clapped. An article was written in the press, and posts on social media applauded that hopefully we can now put this behind us and focus on city business. That evening, I went home and sent the following email to the councilmembers, city staff, and legal staff. I wrote, "Good evening. If this is a violation of open meeting, then so be it. I hope not, but if it is, then it is. If someone wants to report me, then I'm willing to face the consequences. The experience that we hopefully concluded tonight is not what anyone signed up for. It's not what we were elected to do. It has fouled our image in the eyes of the citizen and cost us the trust of many. I was sincere about what I said at the end of the meeting tonight and hope the same from others who spoke. I hope that the animosity and anger can be put aside and that we can move on. I hope that all of the requests for all of the things that have been requested of the city staff and Lake City Law can also be put aside. It will only serve to continue the animosity, fractured relationships, and the ability to move forward. Most important, these requests have been overwhelming the city staff to the point that they have been unable to handle their normal workload and responsibilities. The requests from Lake City Law are undoubtedly going to result in a billing of taxpayer dollars that we have the opportunity to end now. If those making requests would please consider rescinding those requests, I believe that it would go a long way to moving forward. We have important issues and the opportunity to regain the confidence and trust of the citizens. If we can demonstrate that we have the ability to put this behind us and move on, please, let's figure out how to do this. Thank you." Councilmembers have filed numerous requests from the city, from Lake City Law over the past six weeks. These have been for communications between councilmembers, staff, and Lake City Law. They have been for legal descriptions, codes, statutes, and research on special meetings, executive sessions, councilmembers voting in the process, and even requests for communication between Lake City Law and a private citizen who is a client of Lake City Law. These requests have burdened the city staff to the point that they are impeded in doing their daily business. These requests are costing taxpayer dollars for the time it takes city staff to process the numerous requests. These requests of Lake City Law are costing the taxpayer numerous billable hours by Lake City Law. This is taxpayer money paying for the request of councilmembers. Now that we have a new mayor and issues behind us, certain councilmember continues with his request, costing taxpayer dollars to fund whatever his eventual goal is. I have to ask, are these requests benefiting the city and the people of the city? If so, I would ask that that councilmember tell the people what benefit it is to continue using taxpayer dollars to fund whatever the ultimate goal is. I ask the councilmember, tell the people what the ultimate goal is that the taxpayer dollars are being used for. Why should the taxpayer pay for whatever this councilmember is trying to accomplish? In my email, I asked that we put the animosity, anger, and vindictive this behind and move to the business that we were elected to do. It appears to me that a councilmember is not ready to do so. I ask that the councilmember tell the people what benefit will be to the city and the people of the city to continue whatever the goal. Last week, councilmember Roder in an emotional statement led me and others to believe that he was sorry for his actions related to the animosity and the fractured relationship. Every councilmember bears some fault for what happened the last two months. I ask if all members of the council can pledge right now to the people of the city to put this behind us and move on to doing the city business. I think that enough taxpayer money has been wasted on these requests by councilmembers. Thank you.
Didn't anyone else care to make a statement? Any other councilmember?
I just have a few questions.
Sure.
Councilmember De Priest, I was just wondering, are these requests, like for public information? Public information requests?
Those are some of them, yes.
Okay. So, because I know that public information requests are something that, it's a privilege of the people to be able to ask for information. And I was listening to a video by the Attorney General, Wozdyn, where he was saying that this is the public's opportunity, people's opportunity to dig and get information, and that's a right that we have, and really, we're not allowed to ask people to defend why they're asking for public information. So, yeah, I'd just say that Councilman Roder isn't here tonight to defend himself. I know he wanted to be here. But I just believe that it is our right as councilmembers to ask for information and do what our conscience tells us is right to do for the citizens. And I think that we need to have grace on both sides, and I just want to say that tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything?
I'll respond to that, sure. You're right, especially the citizens, and everybody, council included, has that right to ask for information. What has gone on the last two months in relation to the reasoning for this and the threatening nature of it, I'll just lay it out here, okay? The intimation or suggestion that the reason this is being done can only be, much of it can only be done to bring some form of action against councilmembers for issues that have been suggested in some of those emails. I made a statement last council meeting, the council meeting before, about open meeting rules and the like. Let's be honest, everybody's violated them, okay? And my concern with what's going on now, that if people are going to start throwing stones, it's going to turn ugly. Because I know that they're going, I'm going to speak for myself, if, what I'm aware of and my knowledge of discussions that went on since last March or April, up to the election and from the election, it could only harm the city if what it appears the reasoning behind these, some of these requests are. And that's really what I'm trying to avoid here. It's like I said last week, I've talked with councilpeople, elected officials from all over the place, and again, let's be honest about it, okay? People talk to each other. Now, do they make decisions about things? Hopefully not. But people all over the place, every city, every place we talk to, have, they talk, okay? And that has gone on here also. I see no positive reason for what appears to be a continuation of whatever the reasons are for a certain amount of those requests. And I'm just hoping that, as the mayor stated at the beginning, that all of us can pledge, and let's move on.
Any other comments or suggestions?
Yeah, can I respond to that? Yeah, I was just saying, just like to say that I think it's unfortunate that we're having this discussion without Councilman Roder being here. It's, also, we're speaking in shaded tones where the public is not hearing full disclosure about what the topics of discussion are. And personally, I feel like the truth is nothing to fear, and information requests reveal truth. And I just think that we have nothing to fear from truth. And I mean, we found out today that this costs $30,000. I mean, so, yeah, let's save the taxpayers money, but looking for truth is valuable in my mind. So that's all I want to say.
Ladies and gentlemen of council, with your permission, perhaps we can add this as a discussion item on the next agenda?
Yep.
Does that work for everyone?
That works.
Great, we'll take care of it that way.
Thank you.
Do we have any further discussion comments from council?
Did you need any clarification from Peter while he's here on anything that he submitted, or do we want to possibly take that up at another time?
I don't have any specifics on that. Peter, if you've got anything you'd like to tell us, any?
We sent a letter to you dated, let me.
That would be wonderful, if you would, just so you're easier to hear.
I'm here on behalf of Lake City Law, not on behalf of the city of Hayden. We sent a letter to you dated May 6, 2022, to address a number of requests that had been made by councilmember Roder. He made a request directly to one of my partners for a number of different communications and some categories of communications, and in reviewing the rules of ethics, we recognize that one councilperson or the mayor is not our client. The client is the city of Hayden. And so if a request comes to us for any information from our client, the city of Hayden, then we'll review that request and respond accordingly. I can tell you that, and I know that it probably doesn't need to be said, but I'll say it anyway, that we have an obligation to safeguard our attorney-client communications with all of our clients within the firm. And so if any of you were firm clients, we would protect that just as we would our existing clients, and just as we will protect communications with the city of Hayden. So that's all we wanted to do, is to clarify to you our ethical duties in that regard, and we will act accordingly.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
From what I heard from council, we'll put this on as a discussion item next agenda? Excellent. Any other comments? I move for adjournment.
I'm ready for a cigar.
All right. We stand adjourned. Thank you.